Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Mid-11th Avenue, 4th floor Downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bydlman?
Lord, as we come to you this morning, we thank you for all things. We thank you for the Commissioners and their staff and we thank you for a country where we're free and our heart goes out to Pakistan and all the young children that lost their lives and we just pray for our world and for safety and protection and freedom and we just believe you also that Lorraine County will grow and be productive and that's our prayer and that we'll have the unity to work together to make that happen, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Beth. Good morning, welcome Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to December 17th, 2014 meeting. Commissioner Williams, your dog?
Jim, go ahead. Good morning, this is kennel 34. He is a Beagle Shepherd mix, was found in Sheffield Township, available on Saturday the 20th. We have 26 other dogs in the kennel, so come on down, take a look, thank you.
Inexpensive Christmas presents, make you happy for a long time.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Right.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Advances and repayments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Did you want to ask Mr. Cordez about the advances?
I was going to talk about that when we got into the budget issue.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, aye.
Requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner, I do have a number of personnel issues I'd like to discuss with the Board, potential hiring, Golden Acres, maybe discussion of solid waste maintenance, job family services, also update on ongoing litigation, potential purchase and sale of real estate. This is also last meeting, if I can think of anything else that we may need to deal with before we close down, I'll modify under my business. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session to discuss those outlines, those issues I have outlined, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of November 25th and December 10th, 2014.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize County Administrator to provide and execute all necessary documents effective December 18th, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, for the year-end closed activity, including but not limited to transfers, advances, repayments, appropriations, requisitions, travel, bills, payroll, related transaction and payments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approving a housekeeping resolution relating to wage increases for all non-bargaining employees identical to wage increases in the United State of Workers Local 8845 Agreement for employees to include E-901, JFS, Dog Kennel, Bridge, Golden Acres and all other departments under the jurisdiction of the Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the County Vision Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners? Yes.
With the next couple of issues with these contracts, I want to make sure that the resolution also includes that I need some clarification, the contract, Jerry worked on them pretty quickly for me, but I still need some changes to them, so...
Approval with tentative.
With approval by the Prosecutor's Office after the changes are made. This way I don't have to stop for four weeks here and wait on the next Board meeting to get something done.
Okay.
Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Benefit Management Services Agreement, E-Vision, for RX Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause.
With the same requirements as the last one, per GM and the County Prosecutors, I'll move.
Second. Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in Business Associate Agreement with Envision Pharmaceutical Services LLC for prescription medication and supplies effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause and approval of Prosecutor's Office.
Mr. Cordez, 15 needs the same caveat?
I would put them in all, I...
Including the...
One or two of them have been changed already, but I wasn't, I didn't track it real close yesterday, so just that flexibility would be appreciated.
Again, as...
Second. Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in contract with Delta Dental for County Dental Services effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018 with 90-day cancellation clause and approval of County Prosecutor's Office.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve the 2015 Special Revenue Annual Appropriation.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve the 2015 General Fund Budget.
I will move and I'm assuming we'll have discussion.
Temporary.
It's temporary, correct, it's a temporary budget.
Second. Discussion.
Discussion, we've been working on this for about a month or so and getting our final numbers. In respect to discussions with the County Administrator, we have pulled back all advances that most of the advances County has back to raise our carryover.
We, here's where we stand, Commissioner, we had a lot of outstanding encumbrances that needed to be swept and looked at. When I say swept, it means that were they still really encumbered funds? Sometimes you get a lot of encumbrances and you don't cancel the encumbrances when it comes in less than it was expected to and so we were doing that and we've been going through all the advances. Now, one of the reasons that I put all those pullback on the advances into your Board business was that I want to make sure our carryover looks strong because we're going to do borrowing next year. It's just an accounting move to shore up what we look like at the end of the year, but those advances are going to go right back out in the first quarter next year. The rating agencies, you know, they look at the end of the year carryover and I spend an inordinate amount of time trying to show them that they're actually the stronger carryover based upon all these advances outs to the various programs and people are going to go, what programs are those? Well, it's CDBG, could be workforce development, we've done advances to Children and Family First, whoever really needs money for grants, because most of the grants now are, how do I explain it, a do and get. You have to complete all the requirements and then you have to submit and do a draw on the funds and so they need operating capital throughout that and it's getting worse as we know with Children and Family First, it may be six months before they can do a draw on their funds. We can't shut down for six months, they want us to do the work and then they want us to draw on the funds and this is some maneuvering that's going on at the state with regard to how they're allocating those funds, so it makes it more challenging for us at the local level. I did not want to have to explain to Moody's why our carryover was going to look a little bit less than it did last year, so that's why the accounting maneuvering with the advances. I just don't want you to think that you have real cash there.
Right, so are we looking with all those advances pulled back at the 8.3 million carryover with those advances?
Restowing, sales tax is going to come in, it's not out there yet, so it could come in a little bit higher than that.
I think it's going to come in a little higher and I also talked to Ms. Rollo over at the Domestic Relations, I think they're going to be returning more cash than they anticipated from Domestic Relations, so I was happy to hear that, we're talking about some projects for next year, but it was, I always know I'm in trouble when somebody says I have good news and they say but.
But.
That cancels out the...
I see Jody's here today, so...
Thank you, Jody. Nice job on the budget through the year.
Yeah, it was really good, we've always had the ability to work with domestics on the budget issue, so we're going to meet and talk about a project over at the Justice Center in January, so that give me a little bit more comfort factor that I think we'll get to at least the carryover, hopefully the carryover number that we had last year, but recognizing that it's part of the float that we used to fund programming.
Well, we've worked together on budget and based on the numbers that came in, we do pass a temporary every year since you've been here, Commissioner, and prior to you being here, was a temporary going forward. The Budget Commission is always quite conservative in their estimates in what our revenue's going to be, but I had prepared in the center round, Commissioner Williams, you had this about a week and a half ago, because you asked for anything updated, there had been no real changes to it except for, since the decision was made to move probation to Middle Avenue, taking out the dollars there and the $50,000 they went in for building maintenance because we're attending to the maintenance issues. I spoke with Karen this morning, actually the jury commissioners room, they've got a walk-through today with potential bidders and also the veterans, since we're working on a building and it's not the veterans' responsibility for housing that falls back to Commissioners, we took that out of the budget. So that puts us moving forward at about a $58,276,454 budget for next year, but just doing it as a temporary to cover salary accounts through the first quarter and then we will appropriate thereafter, we'll be receiving our tax receipts when the taxes go out in February, so then we can get a closer look at it and as we've always said, the county budget is a living document and we adjust it up or down based on the amount of receipts we have.
And based on that, the one I sent to you, I went through, I looked at the expenditures for this year, Lisa did a good job getting that to me, added 3%, 5% and depending on which department like EMA was a little higher, so pretty much everyone is getting the numbers they want or at least getting more than what they asked for or what they spent last year. And based on that, it comes under what the actual, by $2,000, what the projected revenue income is for 2015, I would state that we should submit a budget that is within our actual budget set by the Budget Commission and knowing that if the additional revenue does come in, you can increase it next year.
The concern with that, Tom, no offense, I mean, I took all the numbers you set and went through them yesterday, taking line number 17, Public Assistance, that's our mandated share to ODJFS, your original figures I think were cut at 20%, 15%, now you're at 14% that would then...
Well, it's not a cut, that's an increase.
Well, still, but we have a mandated share they give us under revised code, we make the mandated share.
Right, but for the years, you're just over a million dollars for the last two years.
I understand that.
So, I mean, to go through and do a budget of it at $1.2 million when you're spending under 1, under a million 20,000, I think adding 20% onto it is a little much.
Well, I think that's our safety net though, in case we have any changes on, that's how we've always done in the past. I did see you adjusted though because originally on the budget you said over you were cutting the jail allocation.
Well, I look at the, right, there's a, you have two Commissioners and I end up duplicating that, that's why I sent you the updated one, and they're getting the 4.125 million that they requested.
Yeah, I see that on there.
But you have line 10 and 11 blacked out and 24, 25...
10 and 11, it's not blacked out, it came out blacked out in yours, it was actually in red. It's just showing that the, under leases, those are combined and for the total combined for the community development, we spent like $600,000 and some thousand total with the expenditure and I'll have to look at it, but there's also...
But we're also sure staffed employees and we're going to introduce our new Economic Development Director this morning. You've got to remember, some of these numbers, Tom, are based on people we haven't recaptured that we've got to recapture, that we've been holding off and holding off and also when you look at expenditures, but like workforce development, you want to take a 5% increase to what they expended this year where we budgeted the request of 309,000, that's 100% reimbursable, so whatever goes out comes back in, it's not truly an expenditure, the general fund, it's a budget line item.
Again, I'm just looking at going through and having the expenditures match, if you want to increase that number, I'm fine with increasing that number, but I think you should decrease.
Well, I'm actually happy with the one I sent out to work with, so I think I'm happy with this as a temporary budget, like I said, as we go into next year, we'll adjust up and down based on the revenues coming in, so...
What was our actual revenue for this year, do you have that?
Final numbers, somewhere around 59.
I think we're going to be just under 50 million.
Just under 50 million?
Plus carryover.
That was with the...
Carryover. That's carryover end?
No.
No.
It's just revenue.
That's just revenue, 50 million, so...
Just under.
Right, so the Budget Commission is giving us 47.9, so almost 48.
That's for next year.
Right, for next year, and if we got 50 million this year, chances are we're at least going to get 50 million, so they're $2 million lower than what we're actually probably going to get because they are conservative, which is fine, but I don't want to go and devastate, you know, county government because they're conservative.
I don't think you're devastating county government, what, like you said, it's a temporary budget, so you're going through...
But with you, what you're proposing, we'd actually have to make the cuts now.
No, it's actually an increase on what they spent.
You're talking about the actual expenditures, and when you go into office services and cutting those are some things we go doing forward.
I mean, the thing that you always, there's always been a built-in carryover into the budget, that's how you get your 7.6 million dollars, it's built in.
Right.
So all I'm doing for the budget in order to show that it's a true budget is going through and giving like a 3% to 5% increase of what the actual expenditures were. If in June you decide that, hey, we want to go through and we want to do a software upgrade and it's going to cost $200,000 or a phone system, well, you will have a better indication of how much revenue you have coming in and then you can adjust the budget that way.
Well, let me go back again, Tom, take your line item number 43, the sheriff, you went off of his expenditures issue and then you gave him a 3% increase. Well, what are we taking into account, the $99,000 in the cops grant deputies that we have to carry based on, we approved the grant three years ago, we got $99,000 there, we have $400,000 in regards to the courtroom security for PSI and adult probation, plus a couple of the requests he had within there, his 5.618 budget, you got him at 5.462. I know you're talking about the expenditures they had this year, but that doesn't encompass everything that's required for next year in regards to the additional services.
Well, with the sheriff, a lot of that was already in the budget, he went over it, those expenses have already been paid.
No, you weren't here for the one, were you here for his presentation before when they made the mistake for a million dollars, they thought they needed a million one, we went back and readjusted it?
Well, what I'm looking at...
Because he did a double...
Yeah, no, I was here when he did it.
Okay.
Their budget was 4.91 million dollars for this year, they spent 5.3 million dollars.
Correct.
So they do have expenditures in there and again, it's, you have a limited amount of money that's going to go through, I'm going to stand by where it's nice that everybody wants more money and they can go through and provide more services, but you have to kind of restrict the spending as well too.
Well, I think we've done a good job of that over the years, the county's been holding its own, I mean, it'd be nice to do better and have more staff and accomplishment, we haven't been able to do that, but we've been able to provide the basic services and again with the operations of the county that we don't have a lot of significant control over.
Well, and there's things in here I don't know if you're going to tackle on, I mean, you're looking at, you do have the veteran services, they're looking at a building, huge investment on there.
Correct, but that's not a cash out, that'll be a bonded.
That's going to be a bonded, so you're going to be looking about, you know, $100,000 on there for the bond and then you're going to be looking at a new phone system, which is probably going to be bonded out, another 75 to 100,000 dollars and then if you go through and you do additional capital improvements on there, if you want to go through and...
The traditional software?
Software, all that stuff, that's not included in here in your budget, which is going to increase that a dollar amount, so that's why I said I would rather have a lower budget and then if those items do come up and you do need to purchase them, you have the money.
I think we've done a good job, I'm willing to reaffirm the motion, approve the 2015 budget for 58,276,454.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Approve the agreement for the provision of limited professional services for Barbara Hoffmann, Inc., Cleveland, an amount of 5,000 plus allowances of 5,000 for sample extraction and evaluation from Lorraine County Justice Center, investigation of the 4th floor west exterior wall area, water infiltration in 3rd floor south wall near mediation department paid from the capital improvement professional services account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, would you please?
I will.
This is added on.
And in fact, I met with counsel yesterday to discuss this once again. We have been chasing defects in this building since 2005. We were in litigation with the masonry company that built the curtain wall on the Justice Center, unfortunately that company went out of business, we've tried to chase the bonding agent, we're back, excuse me, we're back doing that again, so I would say we're beginning a pre-litigation again to try to get some return funds for the defects that were in the building when we took possession of it. This is part of that, this is another defect, we've been looking for this water leak, this elusive water leak for a number of years. I thought that we had these things taken care of, but this one has been problematic and this is the one that Administrator Louie was talking about, that I had, up until that point, hadn't heard much about and thought it had been resolved. We can't resolve this ourselves, I once again need Barbara Hoffmann to come in, go through, do testing, water may seem very simple, but where it comes in and where it ends up is very challenging and this one's even more so because it depends on the direction of the rain, the wind and we'll go for a long time without a problem and then boom, we have problems. They believe it has to do with work behind the curtain wall that wasn't, the brick curtain wall that wasn't done correctly. I hope we don't have to do any more destructive testing, this is just a start of it, there's a little bit of destructive testing here, but not a lot. If you remember when we did this about six years ago, we actually cut holes in the building and went in and did inspections and that caused a lot of work to be done. When you say what a lot of work was, it was $800,000 worth of defect work that had to be done. Now, because of some timing in the litigation and the company going out of business, we believe the only claim we can press without covering this that's being done right now would be about 530,000 of that, we're going to continue to press that claim with the bonding company, but clearly that'll be risk managed, there'll be some settlement on that, there's, you know, there's some potentiality for a negotiated outcome on that, but we're going to continue to have to do this type of work until we find all these defects and I'm going to tell you, this is just to give us an idea of what we need to do, this is not to pay.
This is not to fix.
To fix, but it's got to be done and I want to, and the reason it's on the agenda today is because I don't want to wait another four weeks or five weeks, I want to get them engaged now and get this, try to get this matter to a point where I can talk to you in January about possibly what a solution's going to cost, or at least a proposed solution. Remember, we thought we fixed this once.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Calo?
No.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Under Children and Families, Amendment Resolution 14454 adopted July 9th, 2014, approving Help Me Grow Contract with Lorraine County Developmental Disabilities, said amendment is to reflect an increase from $60,000.67 to $115,757.33 and extend the contract through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve an enter in agreement with Lorraine Metropolitan Housing Authority in the amount of 16,500 for tenant-based rental assistance using, I don't know, PY14 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program Grant Fund, this will provide rental assistance to a minimum of 21 low moderate income households countywide, excluding the cities of Alariah, Lorraine and North Ragaville, and will be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Award contract to CT Consultants, Manner, in the amount of 202,400 to provide professional services to administer and implement 2014 CHIP Grant, Lorraine County and its partners for ruling in Chapel Lake were awarded 1,150,000 for fiscal year 14, 121,400 will be used for implementation of private owner rehab and repairs and 67,000 administration coordination of activities and 14,000 for soft costs with three units to be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Approve an enter in agreement with Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC, land cast through the amount of 10,000 as provider of fair housing services and compliance with CDBG program year 14 to be paid from the contract services account.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize various personnel to utilize the various credit cards not to exceed 4,000, said usage is for work-related expense, food, transportation, gas and oil, motor vehicle repair, maintenance, conference, telephone and lodging.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Childcare Resource Center, Lorraine, in the amount of 37,454 to provide certification training for type B child daycare providers for fiscal year 15, this is effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, and authorize director to execute amendment for changes in program and content or increase on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, approved as to form.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Calo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorize purchase service agreement with El Centro Services, Inc., Lorraine, in the amount of eight hundred to provide Spanish consultant services for fiscal year fifteen, effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and authorize director to execute amendment for changes in program and content or increase on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve and enter in contract with Greenway Computer Recycling LLC, Indiana, for operation of three scrap collection, I think this should be e-scrap collection recycling program for two thousand and fifteen. Four RFPs were received, this being the most complying with specifications, and will result in substantial savings instead of costing fifty thousand dollars annually. District will realize income of over ten thousand annually to be paid from the e-scrap recycling fund account.
Mr. Bailey?
This is involving industry like I've told you for many years, and my thirty-some years in this business, I've watched electronics turn a hundred and eighty degrees, and now it's becoming a cash asset to us. So we may not even be in the business in ten, fifteen years. There may be enough private sector folks that squeeze us out. So that's a good thing, all right? And we're going to try this and see how it works with Greenway. There's been another company that's popped up on the horizon. It's called Columbus Drop Off. It's also paying for all electronic parts coming in their facility. So this is a chance to make a little money instead of spending money.
The resolution says income of ten thousand to be paid from.
Paid to?
Well, it can't be paid from if we're going to make money, so I think that we need to change that resolution, right? And I want that to go into that account, that revenue account that we established over in solid waste pursuant to the Attorney General opinion that says funds generated from activity of the solid waste district do not have to be reincorporated into restricted funds, so.
No, this is just, I mean, that probably should have been a period, but it's just ten thousand annually, and this will be paid from the e-scrap account.
But we're not being, we're getting money back. We're not paying out.
We're receiving, not paying.
Pay for the contract, right?
Yeah, we have to pay for the contract.
Well, I think you have two mixed issues here.
Right. One is the approval of the contract with the company.
Right. That's what we're seeking, all right?
Right.
And they will pay us for certain items in the electronics scrap stream.
Where we can get.
We're not paying a contract. We're not paying them for a contract.
Previously, we paid eight cents a pound, all right?
Well, it says instead of substantial state, instead of costing us fifty thousand annually, the district will realize income over ten thousand, so.
Period.
To be deposited into whatever account. Right?
Understanding me, we're changing vendors.
Yes.
The new vendor is going to pay us for our e-scrap.
Yes.
Versus us paying somebody to haul it away.
Yes.
So this contract with Greenway is to approve the contract with them to handle our e-scrap.
Right, and make payment to us up into ten thousand dollars a year, all right?
That, period. That's the end of the resolution, as all needs to say, to enact the contract.
I would agree with that. You can't go from paying fifty thousand to making ten thousand and still be paying somebody though.
Correct. I agree. It should be period.
Okay.
We've only got forty things on here, so.
You said that we had to pay for a contract?
No.
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 No, but it should have been period.
Period, and that's it. If we can stop it there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have that adjustment now?
Yeah.
Thank you. I will move.
Second is amended.
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the MOU with OSU Office for the year two thousand and fifteen for compost education now to exceed seventeen thousand, four hundred, and will be paid in two payments, May and November, each in the amount of eighty-seven hundred from the solid waste allocation account, and contains a thirty-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion here. This is in regards to our OSU extension. I've had dialogue back and forth with Judge Walter in regards to the Green Acres money. After a couple of things he had to take out of it, do we ever get a final number back from Judge Walter?
I think he's still waiting to find out about the grant that somebody's.
There are, Denny. I spoke with Minnie Taylor, and she was going to call Judge Walter to figure him out. I also threw the budget process through what we had there, allocated up to forty thousand dollars if needed out of the general fund to make OSU extension. The hundred and three thousand, six hundred dollars total, so we qualify for a four-H program also. Judge Walter's, you'll call him today and get that finished up, so he can get that part done, because we have to do a call with him, so. This ties into what the Lorraine County Solid Waste pays for services provided by OSU extension, which now will make our hundred and three thousand and change match, which means Lorraine County will still be able to have a four-H program next year also. I knew, Mr. Bailey, if you'd like to talk about it anymore.
No.
No, I'll second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the various MOUs with the Health Departments for the year two thousand and fifteen to be paid from the solid waste allocation account. County General Health District pay in the amount of fifty thousand, who be paid in five payments of ten thousand each for the months of July through November. Alaria City Health Department pay in the amount of sixty thousand, who be paid in twelve months at five thousand dollars each per month, and Lorraine City Health Department in the amount of sixty thousand, who be paid twelve months in five thousand dollars each per month.
Any comments on this, Mr. Bailey?
No.
Did that go up? Wasn't it fifty before?
No.
No, it's always been sixty thousand?
Two cities more money we've given the county.
Always have. The Health Department says they don't need it, so that's the reason they're less.
The city of Alaria's City Health Department's really going to be needing it since they got cut so drastically, or going to be cut so drastically.
And then Lorraine's movement also, I saw in the paper about hiring Kathy Boylan to be their director for another director, so. I will move.
Lot of changes. Second.
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
With regard to those changes, if I may for a second, now with Keith, you brought up the Health Department. These changes are a digression, not a progression.
Right.
Okay, I want to point that out because we got very, very close in conversation about a year or two ago to having one Health Department representing the whole county. That still needs to occur in Lorraine County with Lorraine, and I'm not privy to why they're moving in that direction. I'm sure they're thinking they're doing the best thing there. But we need to encourage people to re-engage in those conversations about a one health district community rather than a three health district community.
Actually, Theresa and I were having that discussion about eight o'clock this morning.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't say that here when we have the opportunity to say that. The time may be even riper now for these conversations with the stress that we're seeing in the Alaria city budget, and they're doing things that we've done now for a number of years, and they're not nice things to do. Lorraine is still struggling a bit themselves up there, so we may very well want to try to contact them and provide a little bit of insight and leadership to suggest that we should have those conversations again. But going and separating is not the answer. Combining is the answer.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, except on behalf of Eaton Township, the improvements and maintenance bond in Mallards Edge subdivision two, concrete pavement, sanitary sewers, and storm sewers were installed in two thousand and fourteen, and inspection fees have been paid. The plat is recorded in Record of Plats, volume one hundred, page thirty-six, Legends Way with road number T three sixteen, commencing west and then north of Legends Way Phase One, four hundred and eighty point thirteen feet, or zero point zero nine one miles in length, ending at a future development point to the north.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter an LPA agreement with ODOT to administer the design qualification of bidders, construction, and inspection of the project, and establish responsibilities for local administration of the project for repair and resurfacing a lake avenue from Gersbrough Wall to Alaria Avenue to Alaria Township, and will be paid by federal funding assistance. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter consent legislation with ODOT to perform bridge replacements of structures located on Parsons Road Township Road fifteen, over Black River Carlisle Township, and Snell Road Township Road twelve, over Baker Creek Columbia Township. Both bridges are currently scheduled to be constructed in two thousand and fifteen. No funds are required by the county, and the county engineer agrees to assume and bear one hundred percent of total cost for added construction items required by the county and that necessary for improvements as determined by the state and federal highway administration.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the sheriff, authorize sheriff to utilize the Visa credit card now to exceed thirty-five hundred for conferences, food, lodging, transportation, telephone, gas, and oil, or vehicle maintenance and emergency repairs of county-owned or leased vehicles, and the payment of internet services using criminal investigation in accordance with the highway rules for three oh one point two seven.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter in agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to engage Tyler to license CERN software and provide CERN professional services relating to the sheriff's civil office for soft code to be paid from the nine-one-one bonds fund account.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Cordez?
Yeah, this has been a slug, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. Long time coming.
Well, you remember, this started out at like a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and you said to go out and squeeze somebody's head, so we did. But the squeeze wasn't quite that easy. It was taken about eight or nine months.
Right.
I can tell you that there's no more water to wring out of this shammy. This is about as low as it's going to go, and they also offered us terms and conditions on the payments, and not that we really needed that, but they kept insensitized in the package any way they could on their end. As a point of explanation, the civil office oversees quite a few things that interlace with nine-one-one. We consolidated the records department. We consolidated dispatching. We've saved millions of dollars for the general fund and have developed a cooperative working relationship with the sheriff that didn't exist just a mere few years ago. I would suggest that things are working very, very well. I have no complaints from them, and anytime that something comes up, we work right through the issue. So it does prove that you can jointly administer these things and still make a successful outcome. That said, now the civil office software is a patchwork of different programs over the years that they've put together to save money and try to get the job done. But it's not going to work well with all the new software and all the work we're doing at nine-one-one with New World. It needs to be upgraded. It needs to be brought in line with what we're going to be doing at nine-one-one, so that the records and the warrants and everything that we have working continue to seamlessly happen. The sheriff doesn't have this money in his budget. We talked about this early in the year a couple of times, and the board demonstrated a bit of a willingness to support this if we could get the cost down. One of the things I, you know, I just want to put out is remember, they were warrants. Remember, we put the drive-up door. Used to be they would drive up even out the jail. They would get out of the car, go in, get the warrant. You know, you know the way, it's a little bit of waste of time. Everybody has a little bit of that fluffy time, and we got that down, and now they radio in, they drive up to nine-one-one. We put the door out. They get the warrant. They drive off. They really didn't like it at first. Now they love it, especially now when the weather gets cold. They don't have to get out of the car or go inside. It's those little efficiencies, those little practices that we're working together on to more fully utilize time and resources. This will make them much more efficient. We'll be able to utilize these resources and get more results by doing this, so I would encourage you to support this contract.
Commissioners, this is another one. I did have a few language tweaks, so.
In fact, I had that caveat again with prosecutor's approval. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
You thought you were done.
No.
No, we've got more coming.
Oh, boy.
It was a pretty robust agenda that we had here, but we're trying to close the year out, and I got a few more that came in late. Wasn't able to make it to the agenda.
Were they coming at midnight?
It seemed like it last night. I need to get an approval on the one-stop MOU. This is more housekeeping. The MOU just allocates costs through the various departments. There's a dozen or so departments over there that share the cost of the space, and this just puts out the prop allocation. I think it was Volk Rehab had a couple more people come into the space, so we have to realot where the funding is for that space.
There was no changes to the actual contract. It was just.
Right. The contract language is pretty basic, and this doesn't cost us anything. Actually, we receive revenue for the space, but it has, in accordance with the prevailing guidance in this, it has to be allocated based upon utilization and the number of people actually being in the space.
Amend resolution thirteen, four sixty, adopt in May eighth, two thousand and thirteen, approving and entering MOUs with various network partners to identify and coordinate a variety of workforce development resources, and the total contract amount is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, effective July first, two thousand and thirteen, through June thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
I have a contract here from Paladin to redo our biometrics hand reader. Actually, what I'm proposing, this is another one we've been working on for a while, is to put hand readers on each floor rather than just on the first floor. The one downstairs is not doing well. It's quite old. It's temperamental at best. I met with the Director of Children's Services, and I will tell you, we do meet on a regular basis, and I wasn't aware that they were having some issues, because they do work in the evening. They do have children and families come here to have the foster care parents in. A lot of times, they need to get into the third floor. They can control the children that they're charged with a lot better than going down through the first floor, trying to go up the stairs, the elevators, and he's asked that we take a look at that. They've offered to contribute some of the funding. I don't know how much. I'll work that out with them, but this would also provide better access for the employees that are here in the evening. We started locking the doors again much earlier, because we don't have the distant learning going on right now. It needs to be upgraded. It's, we'll put that on the capital improvements notes that we have right now that we're going to roll into bonds later on.
Madam Clerk?
Please, no resolution?
No, that's okay. Approve and enter in contract with Paladin in Valley View, Valley View, in the amount.
What's the amount?
Just make sure. It says twenty, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty cents for installation of the biometric fingerprint readers and per watch access control panel at the administration building.
Second, that was very good.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
All right, here's a big one. Boeing and Associates, you've seen all the renderings for the train station, all the work that's going to be done. We were going to do a presentation here. We haven't gotten to that, so we're going to do it in January sometime. I can't wait to unveil the renderings of the potential project over at that center. I still have not nailed down the contract with Amtrak, but it's gotten better. They finally have some money on the table rather than taking everything's free. There's still a lot of work to do there, though, to more fully mature what the relationship will be going forward. So we've been losing time. The last couple of months, we really haven't accomplished anything. We've had that stuff for about two, two and a half months, and I'm really tired of waiting on one thing to occur to progress the project. We have the money to go ahead with this firm and begin doing the hard documents that will be necessary to bid. And I want them engaged now. I don't want to wait and try to do it in the middle of January and then try to get them going at the end of January. Here's my urgency, and this is why I've been frustrated with Norfolk Southern first, and then with Amtrak second. We're going to lose money at the end of June again, a lot of money, if we don't spend it.
This is, these are federal funds that have been awarded for this project. It's not general fund money.
Right, exactly, Commissioner. And I thought that we'd be doing this work, or at least have these contracts, three months ago. But because we haven't been able to reach agreement on several minor issues that can be resolved, I believe they'll be resolved, we haven't moved forward. Even if they're not resolved and the project doesn't see light of day now, all of this engineering work needs to be done. That work isn't going to change. This is not something that's going to expire on the shelf. This must be done at some future date. If funding doesn't become available for the rest of this project, these documents, all this stuff will be able to be used in the future. I'm confident that eventually there's going to be funding for this project. We've lined up quite a bit of funding already. I will tell you, I don't have all the funding lined up, but I'm encouraged that we can get there. But if I lose this funding right now at the end of June, and ODOT's already talking about reallocating our dollars down in Columbus. If I don't demonstrate to them on your behalf that we're doing something, then this is going to die on the vine. I have to have this to get the rest.
We've said to get it going forward. I mean, this has been a hot topic in our five-county region. I spoke with Grace Goldschmidt. She's always trying to keep tabs on how it's going. I keep keeping her informed, and we have to do this.
We do, and the last piece is, I haven't really fully negotiated the cost in this contract, so I would like it to be open. I got a maximum in there, but I want to do a lot better on the cost, so I gave you the maximum, but I believe I'm going to drive that cost down.
Not to exceed, is what the resolution.
I want it not to exceed.
Can you please change that if it's not there?
It is not to exceed.
We'll get federal funds for it, but when the project's done, it's still going to be, the maintenance is going to be on account.
It could be.
And it doesn't look like Amtrak's going to change their timing for routes coming in here, so we're not really going to see any type of increase in passenger.
Well, unless Alaria becomes a destination someday, which quite frankly, we're a stop to destinations. Lots of nice little places along the route are stops to other destinations, so that's not a bad thing. We just happen to be a late, late-morning destination stop. As far as the maintenance go, I will tell you that I've already negotiated well over ten thousand with Amtrak, and my number's higher. I don't know how high we can drive this, but I intend on having as little of the burden on us here for our co-use of that facility.
Yeah, the elevator maintenance, it's going to be higher than a ten thousand.
It may be, Commissioner. I can't tell you right now. I may be able to opt them onto the current county contracts, which would drive down some of those costs. I don't like elevators. They're a pain.
Yeah, it still could be more than ten thousand. I mean, when we were talking early on, it was like sixty, fifty to sixty thousand.
Maybe I was just using bargaining chips that they didn't know about, Commissioner.
Well, no, that was just the thing that you told me as far as the maintenance part.
Well, I'm putting a lot of stuff out there with them. We're in negotiations. They're playing their cards, and I'm trying to play all cards, and I think that we're going to reach some kind of solution on. gonna reach some kind of solution on how these things are gonna be handled. Will there be some local costs? Yes. We're not going to be able to have full absorption, what utilizes there, and in the future, as volume increases, that may change. We're talking about, probably about a nine to ten million dollar project when we're finished here. Recognizing, we've already lost five and a half million dollars in matching federal dollars, but it's not just five and a half million, it's well over ten million, because now we're not getting allocated that money in the future. So we continue to see federal dollars leave this community in the form of paying taxes, and it's not returning to this community for project money. We are a donor county, we are not a recipient county. We need to become a recipient county, we need other people's money. We gotta stop giving them our money vis-à-vis the exchange of dollars at the federal level.
Yeah, but with that, though, you do get the money for the projects, but then that money comes back, where you have to pay the yearly maintenance, or you're paying fees that come out of the general fund as well.
Well, it's no different with federal funds for roads, Commissioner, no difference with repaving of State Route fifty-seven, which Aliri has to maintain, but they got federal dollars.
It's progress in improving our community, that's what our job is, is government efficiency.
Difference, though, with the roads, you have actually more people using them, and you have around four thousand riders, and we don't even know if that's single riders or if that's what, but, okay.
So we're gonna approve an interim contract with Boeing and Associates Cleveland in the amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and eight thirds, and not to exceed unreversed mortgage expenses, forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and five cents for Phase Two, Lorraine County Amtrak platform project.
Slow move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Jim, anything else?
Let me just check.
Double check.
Double check, we've got it all covered.
Yeah, this has been a grueling couple of weeks for everybody over here.
I'm gonna make sure there's nothing else in the folders.
I think I covered most of it, I have the right authorities, you passed the resolution like you always do, so I think that we'll be able to function through the end of the year. Since this is our last meeting, I wanna wish everybody a happy holiday season, whatever your beliefs, traditions, practices are, this time of year is always a pleasant time for everybody. Reach out to those that are in need, be generous with your love and your support, and everybody be safe, and we'll see you in the new year. That's the end of my report.
Mr. Ennis.
I have no reports.
I don't really have a report, I just wanna, like Mr. Cordez says, wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, and a safe and Happy New Year, and wish the best to Mr. Williams and his next chapter in his life, whatever that may be. Good luck to you, sir. End of my report.
Busy week. Noakamet on Friday, our governance board, last one of the year. Just going over some of the issues, again, another presentation on Geoga County's, asking about how they get out of Noakamet, so we'll see how that goes next year. Also got the opportunity with Keith Bailey and Tiffany Barker and Mike Challander, attended the Oberlin Refuge Center, the new hybrid garbage trucks, gonna save them between the five trucks, almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in fuel return on investment, three to four years. Our EPA was there as good partners this time, not just regulating us, telling us what we can't do, they were actually helping us advance a project. City of Oberlin's very thrilled with it, the student organization from Oberlin College did a great job, so nice project moving forward. Also, attended the Man-to-Man Group Christmas Party, Ray Noble always invites me there, great group of guys. Also, on Monday, Second Harvest did their hard hat tour, their new facility, I was there to speak about the importance of supporting a group like Second Harvest, and also talking about, we had Representative Jim Jordan was there also, and he gave a few words, and I sort of talked about the need, it's not just hungry children, hungry people, it's a jobs problem, and with a new Congress coming in, a new state legislature, they gotta worry about how we're gonna produce the jobs, so these people don't have to worry about having to go to the food bank all the time, actually speaking to the Director of the Food Bank, this is one business, I like to seek a lot of business. So hopefully, they'll work on that. Also, if you haven't had an opportunity, I'd like to thank our County Engineers' Office and InfraBreezy Construction, our subcontractors, Griswold Road, spoke to some of the business people on that road, no more flooding, the road looks absolutely beautiful from the hellhole it was, and it looks like we're gonna go forward on moving Aliri Avenue from Griswold going north, so that'll make a nice corridor between those two communities. Again, Merry Christmas, have a good year, see you in fifteen. Oh, we got one more, I'm sorry. Yeah, Don, oh, you missed it in your report, you forgot, so yeah.
I would've had it.
You'd've had it, Tom could've done it, yeah.
He was the last one in the bubble.
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla and Board, I'd like to take just a brief moment to introduce newest member to your economic development team, who'll actually be the day-to-day lead on it. His name is Jerry Good, and he comes with a wonderful pedigree, he's been with us now for about a week and a half, and wanna give him an opportunity to introduce himself to you, so as you see him throughout the community or in the building, that you know who he is, and a little bit of what we have planned on going on. So with that, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to bring him on, and Jerry?
Thank you, Don, I'm excited to be here. Give you a little background on me, I spent sixteen years in the private sector in operations of a small company, eighteen employees. Got into economic development doing a downtown project, attracting a bank into abandoned department store, and thought, this is kind of interesting, so ended up spending ten and a half years in Allen County, Ohio, in economic development. During that time, I served as President of the Ohio Development Association, due to that membership to seven hundred members. Then I was recruited under the Strickland administration to be a Regional Economic Development Director, did that for four years, did over a hundred and fifteen projects in those four years during a very difficult time. And then moved down to Columbus and was asked, under the current administration, to run the Ohio Department of Development, did that for two and a half years, while they stood up jobs in Ohio, responsible for loans, tax incentives, grants, workforce. And now I'm here, and I'm excited to be here, Don's a great person to work with, and I'm looking forward to working with the community.
Looking forward to having you here.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate you.
You know, just as an aside, you know, Jerry impressed us, we got benefit of a head-hunting firm's work, another organization's work, the top three candidates for the Team Lorraine County job, Jerry was in that, top candidates, actually, they took our economic development director, so we took the top candidate from that search, and I was glad Jerry wanted to come up. I was a little worried that we may not be as attractive, but.
Lorraine County's a lot nicer than Franklin County. We've got a lake.
Trust me, I only spent three and a half years in Franklin County, so.
So, you know, I wanna tell you, I think we're getting a lot of talent, I'm glad you're here, and with Dawn over at Team Lorraine County and Jerry here, we're starting to put together a really good, powerful team again, there's been a lot of movement on that in the last year, so welcome, I think you've already relocated here.
I moved over the weekend, so I'm a resident of Lorraine County, moved in over the weekend.
All right, sounds great.
Glad to have that behind me.
All right, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, thank you. Look forward to working with you. Commissioner Williams?
Well, actually, it's emotional, and, you know, being the last meeting in that, when I started here in two thousand and eleven, a lot of people that put their support in me to come in and try to offer different viewpoints, and I think I've done that during my four years. And I just wanna thank the voters of Lorraine County, that gave me that opportunity to do something that I wanted to do my entire life, and that was to work in government and serve the people, and be able to make, try to make a difference, so I thank you for that. At the same time, looking forward to coaching baseball games this summer, and not having individuals talk to me on Thursday's games about what happened in Wednesday's meeting. So that's gonna be nice, and, you know, since the election, the phone doesn't ring as much, and I'm able to actually get through and finish a movie with the kids, so I am grateful for that. But I wanna thank everyone again for the opportunity, it's been a privilege and an honor, and for those wondering what I'm going to do, well, it's open for me. I have been interviewing with companies locally, out of the state, and one potentially even out of the country, which would be a contract service for about four years. So while the future is uncertain, the one thing I do know is that I have my children, which I am truly grateful for, I have a loving God, and with that, there's not too much more that man can ask for. So I just wanna thank you, and Happy Hanukkah to everyone who's celebrating Hanukkah this week, and a Merry Christmas to everyone, and let's hope that two thousand and fifteen not only brings everyone here a blessed New Year, but let's hope that Lorraine County becomes truly great, which I know it has the capability of being, so thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Ennis, twenty-year retirement proclamation to Lorraine Wilkins from JFS, retiring twelve nineteen, and to Ed Croll, thirty-year employee auditor, data department, retiring twelve thirty-one. January twelfth at nine-thirty will be our Commissioner's organizational meeting, at eleven o'clock that day will be our Transportation Improvement District meeting, January twentieth at ten will be our Stormwater District, January twenty-first at nine-thirty, we will have our Commissioner's meeting, and then the state will have mileage reimbursement for fifteen will be fifty-two cents, word corresponds.
Move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone looking to address the board this morning, as we close out two thousand and fourteen? Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Happy holidays, guys.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aliri.